To call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge to the flag. So first on our agenda, we are very proud and happy to welcome three new police officers to our police department. And I'll turn the first part of the meeting over to the chief.
Good evening. Mayor, on behalf of the department, we again like to extend our appreciation for the continued support, not only from you, but the entire board, as we continue to move forward. Thank you. Right now, I'd like to ask Leo, Leonel Jiminon to step up. Mayor, I'd like you to pass a resolution for the appointing of Leo Jiminon to the appoint to the status of police officer for the village of West Hampton Beach. Leo comes to us from the NYPD, where he served for six years in the 114th precinct. Leo comes to us as a certified translator, which is going to benefit not only the department, but the community.
Excellent. You want to do a swearing in?
I solemn swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and you will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer according to the best of your ability.
I do.
Mr. Teeman, if you would read the resolution, please.
Yes.
Signing the book.
Resolved that Leonel Jiminon is hereby appointed to the position of police officer at a semi-monthly salary of $3,028 effective November 8, 2024, from civil service eligible list number 23SR495, police officer, Spanish-speaking, open competitive, in accordance with Suffolk County Department of Civil Service rules and procedures.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Also tonight, Mayor, I'd like you, I'm asking you to pass a resolution for the appointment of Kevin Rubio to the position of police officer with the Village of West Hampton Beach Police Department. Kevin also comes to us with the NYPD, also with six years of experience, and he is also a translator, for a certified translator, which we all, again, it's going to be greatly appreciated here in the village.
Thank you, Chief.
I solemn swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and you will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer according to the best of your ability. Resolved that Kevin Rubio is hereby appointed to the position of police officer at a semi-monthly salary of $3,028 effective November 8, 2024, from civil service eligible list number 23SR495, police officer, Spanish-speaking, open competitive, and in accordance with Suffolk County Department of Civil Service rules and procedures.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Last, but definitely not least, is I'm asking you to pass a resolution for the appointment of Corey White to the position of police officer for the Village of West Hampton Beach. Mayor, as you're aware, Corey has worked with us on a part-time status for the past year. He did receive his initial training with the NYPD back in 2020. There was a break in service, but we are more than happy to take him on, and he's really rooted into the challenges that we pose for him.
Thank you, Chief.
I solemn swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and you will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer according to the best of your ability.
Resolved that Corey White is hereby appointed to the position of police officer at a semi-monthly salary of $2,607.89 effective November 8, 2024, from civil service eligible list number 23SR493, police officer, open competitive, in accordance with Suffolk County Department of Civil Service rules and procedures.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Mayor, I'd just like to take a moment to be able to present them with their shields.
All right, good. Leo? And Leo, we would like to shoot the handle as well. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you.
Congrats. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Corey.
Oh, Corey, you can, you can do it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome full-time.
Again, Mayor, we thank you for your continued support.
A pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, just excuse me for a little bit, I'm going to step outside with them, and I'll be right back.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And congratulations to all the family members, thanks for joining us. Okay, next on our agenda, we have August Ruckelshell. Who's going to come close? Cornell University, our presentation on Long Island Clean Energy, things that are available to our community.
Well, while this is loading up, so hello, everyone, thank you every time, I really appreciate the time you're giving us here today. My, like the mayor said, my name, I actually go by Augie, so my name is August, of course, but my name is Augie Rockfish. And, and as you mentioned, I'm with Cornell Cooperative, Cornell Cooperative Extension of Suffolk County, and Cornell is part of a new effort being funded by NYSERTA called the Long Island Clean Energy Hub. Now, there are 12 clean energy hubs across the state, we are 100% educational, 100% free, all our services that we're offering, we do not have an incentive with one technology or another, we operate solely and exclusively as educators for homeowners, for renters, for small businesses, for non-for-profits, for municipalities interested in kind of one of two things. One, maybe they're interested in a home energy assessment, they're interested in rooftop solar, ground-mapped solar, geothermal heat pumps, they're interested in all sorts of different opportunities, but they don't know what are the current availability of rebates, tax credits, subsidy, what is PSENG offering right now, what is NYSERTA offering right now? We are meant to help people bridge that knowledge gap and offer a path forward to clean, greener energy, but also with a focus on energy savings. The other point of the Clean Energy Hub is to help someone interested in a clean, green career, so they're interested in working with a home weatherization contractor, they're interested in a long-term league career, they don't understand, where do I get started? What type of certifications are necessary? What sort of classes are our local universities, or what does BOSI's offering? Are there scholarships, subsidies, are there certification programs? We are meant to assist that person or that individual, that family member, in that process to identify those opportunities, to take advantage of the opportunities in this transition from traditional fossil-fuel-based energy sources to more renewable energy sources. Overseeing both those efforts is a focus and prioritization on traditionally underserved or disadvantaged communities. So first, I just want to walk through what a kind of conversation with, say, a homeowner might look like, I'll talk a little bit about municipal opportunities that the village may want to explore. Again, we're a free educational resource, happy to help if you're interested in, but whenever a client comes, a homeowner, say, for example, comes, reaches out to the Clean Energy Hub, they may be interested in solar from the bat, we may, say, take a step back before we're doing solar, take advantage of a free home energy assessment, let's secure that building envelope, let's make sure you're not losing hot air during the winter, cool air during the summer, and let's find some immediate paybacks on energy savings, and there may be rebates and subsidies for that work, and then we could have that longer conversation, if you want to do solar or geothermal, air-source heat pumps, those are all important technologies, but we kind of want to steer them first towards energy conservation, and again, that focus on energy bill savings. Through the PSENG Home Energy Assessment, we can now, if you're income-eligible, and we even internally, we joke about these income-eligibility standards because the standards are so low, but there are Long Islanders who meet these conditions, and just to use it as an example, it's hard to read household of one homeowner making less than $36,420 a year, say, who the heck is that? Well, this is an income test, not a wealth test, not an asset test, so retired senior citizens, people on SNAP, people receiving heat benefits, are going to be eligible for these sort of programs. So right off the bat, we hook them up with a home energy assessment, there's about $6,250 available for that homeowner in free home weatherization projects. Anyone, anyone in this room is eligible for at least $1,000 in insulation, air sealing, duct sealing, window works, things like that, window replacements, things of that nature. And we could also help steer them towards certified contractors in these programs. This list that I have here will overlap with some of the NYSERTA programs as well, fortunately. So we take that, that homeowner, $6,250 there, then I could talk to him about NYSERTA's Empower Plus program, there's an additional $5,000 to $10,000 stacked on top of that first $6,000 that they could use for some of these additional things, again, weather stripping, smart thermostats, insulation, things like that, so if there are gaps in that initial assessment, we can start building onto that award with New York State Empower Plus funding. And if you're wondering, who in West Hampton Beach Village is taking advantage of it? Not too many, we do have access to some of this data, we've only had two projects in West Hampton, let's see, you know, with your help, identify other clients, homeowners, that may be able to take advantage of these programs, but there has been some success already here that we could hopefully build upon. So, yeah, two projects. And if you're just wondering, well, who the heck would be eligible for these programming? You know, looking at West Hampton Beach Village, we know roughly 13% of the population is defined as income stress, so we know we have a base of people who could really take advantage of stacking these programs. If the same customer is interested in things like heat pumps, air-source heat pumps, we have really generous, I say we, I'm not part of PSENG, but I've come to internalize a lot of their programs, so I apologize, we as a region have access to pretty generous rebates on those air-source heat pumps, so if they're converting from an oil burner to an air-source heat pump, they're electrifying their home, $4,000 rebate on that first ton, $3,000 on the second, and so on. There have been 20 PSENG heat pump installations already secured in the, in the village here. And I guess I took out that slide, but I should indicate that everyone in this room, regardless of your income status, can get at least $1,000 for that first ton for a heat pump installation, this is $1,000 for the second and third, and then it goes down to about 500 for some of the larger systems as well. So again, everyone is eligible for some sort of rebate on air-source heat pumps. Okay, final piece of the puzzle, that same homeowner, we get a PSENG home performance, we get them in Empower Plus, the Inflation Reduction Act is the federal funding, there's a total of $14,000, $1,600 for air sealing, electric wiring upgrades, electrical service upgrades, a lot of those programs don't cover those, the IRA does, another potentially heat pump is a dollar's up to $8,000. Packaging all those together, I can get potentially $25,000 to $40,000 for that homeowner to essentially weatherize their house and potentially install heat. So there's a really, there's potential with all these programs, they're, I won't lie and say they're easy to navigate, that's why we exist, we take people, we enroll them, we walk them through the process, we are their guides and stewards through it, if they're having problems with the contractors, we will talk to the contractors on their behalf as well. Also, we're looking for contractors to participate in these programs, so if there, you know anyone looking for additional income sources, please reach out to us as well. For everyone, everyone can get home energy tax credit, it's $1,200 for things like home weatherization on a yearly basis, there's an additional $2,000 for things like heat pumps, that you could, that you could claim on your federal taxes and get as a tax credit rebate. We talk to people about things like solar incentives, there's a 30%, federal solar tax credit, you can stack a 25% state tax credit on top of that, so you start piling these things on top of each other, we're talking about some affordable investments in your home that have fairly decent payback periods, as far as upfront investment versus return on investment. We talk to people about things like advantages of leasing versus owning, short story is, I'll give you the takeaway, if you can afford to own, you should own, not everyone can, leasing is still a decent option for them, but you want to make sure you're reviewing that lease pretty closely, and making sure that it's as generous to the homeowner as possible. Electrical vehicles, people interested in EVs, we tell them, here's the list of qualified vehicles, here are the state incentives, the federal tax credits, which now the rebates, I apologize, you can take advantage of right at the dealer, which is nice. Right now, this isn't always true, and may not always be true, but if you get that EV, if you want to charge it with, say, a Level 2 charger, which is going to charge it much more quickly than your traditional plug in the wall, there's a $200 residential charger rebate program through PSENG. Again, one of the reasons we exist is because I could tell people this exists now, if you asked me a year ago on this date, it didn't. One day, it probably won't again, and then all of a sudden, PSENG will roll it out, roll it out again in like June of next year. So we again are there to help get the word out, that people know about the availability of these programs. There are opportunities for municipalities and not-for-profits, and I'll start winding down here because I appreciate your time. This to me is the most important takeaway, it's a very busy slide, here it is, the Inflation Reduction Act changed the law so that everyone is eligible for federal tax credits associated with solar, with geothermal, with energy efficiency. What I mean by that is though the village doesn't pay any taxes, you are eligible for this funding as a direct payment from the federal government to the village, if it's a school, that school is eligible in a payment to the school, if you're a not-for-profit, if you're a church, you are eligible for all these federal tax credits in the form of direct payment, regardless of the fact that you're not filing a tax return on April 14, or whenever it is. So please keep that in mind, there's 30% out there for all these folks that are, that otherwise may be struggling to find the funding for these sorts of projects, this is an intentional, intentional carve-out in the program to make that funding available for non-taxpaying entities.
When about did that, when did that come about approximately?
This was put into law, the Inflation Reduction Act, I think, passed, what, two years ago now? I think it was two years ago now.
Back in the day when I was in the solar industry, they couldn't get anything towards this.
And that, and that understanding was correct then.
Yeah.
It is now, this was an intentional, it wasn't like, oh, we messed up in the drafting process, they did this by design, and in fact, I don't have it on this slide, we, I'm fortunate at the hub, we have a contact at the IRS, who I will put you into contact directly with, who will reiterate what I'm saying, so I'm not a tax attorney, you don't need to take my word for it, but we have affiliations with, with IRS staff, they'll gladly repeat what I've just said, because it, it does not compute to some people, and I've said, like, I've spoken with churches, we don't pay taxes, we don't pay taxes, we're not eligible, like, I understand that.
Yeah.
They did this by design.
That's a big deal.
It's a big deal.
That was a problem back, back in the day, and we, we could, if we revisit Rogers for solar, we can take advantage of it.
That's why you broke this down.
Yeah, like I said, this is the most important slide. If you're looking to do things like electrify your fleet, there, the PSENG has a fleet make-ready program, up to $200,000 for public transportation customers, they have an EV make-ready program, potentially another $370,000 there for DC fast chargers, which are very expensive, up to $30,000 for those Level 2 chargers. Charge Ready New York is the state's EV charging station program, so you can stack, you can combine, and if you're looking as a municipality or a template, you wanted to RFP, explore your options, I could even provide you with a template that, that we like to recommend to other folks, of course, you could always change it, however you feel free, I worked in Suffolk County Economic Development and Planning for 10 years, you always want to customize the language, but it's nice to have a format to use, and whenever I would do something like this, I would put an incumbent on the applicant to tell us how they're going to utilize the rebate and not put the onus on yourselves, but do as you, do as you wish, but again, happy to provide that. This is just a screenshot of the current Cornell Cooperative Extension Clean Energy site, this, that was not an extensive list of everything a municipality or not-for-profit could access, I have a much more extensive list on there, you could check out as you, as you want to explore, always reach out to me as well. This is just an example, some of the workforce development, things that the hub does, this is unfortunately Deer Park, it's not super local for your community, but we do offer like a eight-week, three-hour-day, 17, I guess it's a five-week or something like that, three-hour-day, 17 days of in-person training, 50 hours, completely free, and it's like Renewable Energy 101, but again, on the website, I have some additional opportunities for people interested in careers here, and then finally, I do a newsletter once a month, new things happen, I get it out to everyone through the newsletter, so when these things change, new brands arrive, I get the word out through there, and then we have a Facebook page as well, if you're interested. So I hope I didn't, hope I wasn't too fast, but I hope I didn't take up too much of your time either, and now, any questions? Yes?
Any of those programs available for new construction?
Yes, there are programs for new construction, I think, the consolidated funding, what's it, new construction on homes or...
Hearing, it's 45, I don't know.
Okay, I, I understand what you're talking about. It's funny, there is less funding available, but I would say something like the consolidated funding application, which comes around on a yearly basis, this is the broader economic development, Empire State Development funding mechanism that they use, my suspicion is that we could find something in that packet that would speak to new construction, but I'll, at the top of my head, that's the only thing that kind of comes to mind, but I could do digging on that as well. They, it is true that the state has kind of come to the position that new construction, they're kind of on their own, we want to retrofit the old, but I bet you we could find something for, for new construction, that's my instincts, that's more of my old job talking, I worked in economic development planning for 10 years, and I feel like we could find something there, but.
Anyone else? All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me.
I think we might be in touch.
That would be great.
That would be great.
Thank you very much.
Very helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Business card?
Yes, I got, and I got brochures.
Yeah. Things are always changing in that industry, rebates and things, tax credits.
If you just want to leave them on the table here, and people can help themselves, that would be great, okay?
My second presentation, I have this, I push the brochures down, and you have my email as well.
I do, actually, thank you.
Please throw it your way out if you're interested.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next thing on our agenda, we have a, a public hearing, local law number seven for chapter, chapter 40, Affordable Housing Units, change in the local law, so I need a motion to open the public hearing. Mr. Rubio, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a change in the law that we just recently passed, and if Mr. Angel just briefly explain it, and we can take any questions after.
Yeah, what it is, is basically a few technical amendments to the recently adopted chapter 40, and if anything, of any, like substances in there was an attempt to make, do whatever we thought was reasonably possible to avoid people taking advantage of the program and either selling property that they got from the developer at a low price and profiting on it, or even allow, even like manipulating something through a foreclosure that would result in windfall, because the people who will qualify for the affordable units are probably going to pay about, at least under current information, about 50% of the actual market value, and we want to make sure that if, if that unit is sold or foreclosed, that that unit owner gets his due, her due, from the process, but doesn't make a big profit beyond what the code says, and that if there is a result of condemnation of foreclosure, any substantial extra money because it's being sold for market value, that would come back to the village to go into an affordable housing fund. So basically, though, you'd have to look through the code, because we went through the code provisions and made a few bunch, made a bunch of little tweaks, and added a couple of things in there, but that's basically what was in this new law, this new round of amendments.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Hume?
Uh-oh. Good evening, Jim Hume, as you know, I represent the, the developer up on Montauk Highway, and we have followed with great interest the many twists and turns that this code section has taken, and we really appreciate the effort that went into, from our perspective, preserving the affordability, which is important to us as well as the village, but also making lenders happy to actually lend to the people who are, are going to be purchasing these documents. And one particular thing that I focused on, as counsel knows, we've been attempting to work out an affordable covenant or easement, and I see that the definition of that has now changed in the code, from an affordable easement to an affordable covenant, which I think makes the process much simpler, and we're hopeful that with the passage of this law, that we can get to a point, I, I think Village Council is going to share with us their thoughts on what it should look like, but I'd be happy to take another stab at drafting something as well.
Okay, yeah, of course.
Because this is, this is our, you know, with self-interest, this is our last component of our offering plan, and being able to get approval from the Attorney General to actually start listing these affordables as well as the others for sale, so.
Yeah, we, we have no reason to hold it up, you know, if you can draft something that we'll look at, we'd be pleased, pleased to look at it, and.
We'll do that.
Yeah, we're ready to go.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
What is, what process, if any, needs to occur in order to adopt the covenant or approve the covenant?
Do the amendments, do the...
Not what we're doing here, hopefully this gets satisfied, it's the last, you know, the covenant that needs to get drafted, which Jim was just talking about, procedurally, who do, who do we have to go in front of, if anybody, or can it be handled between the village attorney and, and us without going back in front of a public hearing or the...
Well, ultimately, the process will be between your people and the Long Island Housing Partnership and us, but there'll probably have to be a resolution for the mayor to sign it once it's done, that's all.
In order to derive a resolution, we have to go back to a, a meeting, I'm just thinking about this.
It's no public hearing, it would just appear on the agenda, because when the, when, when the government take, the village takes an act, the act has to be done by the board, and they have to authorize the...
That's where it's going, so I think it will...
We do that all the time.
It'll be our goal, if that works for everyone, to get this drafted, approved, and then back in front of you, because I think there's only one meet, well, there's only one meeting for you guys anyway for...
Well, some months, we have two, some, we have two meetings, the second meeting is a work session, but if there's something that needs to be placed on the agenda to be acted on, that can be, we can add a special meeting to that, and we're doing that next month.
December, there won't be one.
At that point, our next meeting, which is a work session, is our
At that point, our next meeting, which is a work session, is already in the process of being noticed as a regular meeting because we have two other resolutions that we would like to pass at that meeting as well. So we have another, if we get things resolved.
When is that, I'm sorry?
Uh, November.
This month, okay.
Third Wednesday of each month.
So realistically, the third Wednesday of this month and then the first Thursday of December are both times that they could
Great, okay.
authorize the mayor to sign something after we work out all the details.
Our goal to get that done within one of those two meetings so we can keep moving.
I have no reason why we can't.
Thank you.
We have people anxious to buy us. Not the affordable ones.
Uh-oh.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else, any board members' questions? Okay, then I need a motion to close this public hearing.
Motion to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next public hearing is on the special exception for applications from the friends of the ambulance for their digital sign. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion open.
All in favor?
Aye.
So basically, this is just a formality, I believe, because we recently passed a new code allowing these types of signs for emergency services. And this is a component of the new code where we have to go through a special exception process. So this is that. If anyone wishes to speak for or against the ambulance sign, now's the time. Or have any questions about the ambulance sign. Uh, to be honest, we have to leave this public hearing open because there's another step that we have to refer this to the planning board. And then after we receive the planning board's, um, recommendation, then we can close the public hearing and move forward. So those are things, it's one of the reasons we have another meeting coming up.
Nobody's presented the?
Process.
There's nobody here to present the plan?
No, I don't see anyone here from the ambulance and.
You may want to ask them to come here with, uh?
Before planning board?
Well, we had a next meeting if we keep it open because, I mean theoretically, the public should know what the hell they're, they're proposing.
Okay.
Rather than just say.
Well, we do have, we do have the rendering that we're
Right.
That they proposed and, and the size is compliant with the code, so all those, and it's going in the same location as their pre-existing sign. So all those things are, I think, easily resolved.
Oh, no, I, I'm, I'm sure they're resolved, it just seems to me that when you normally have a public hearing, the applicant comes forward and says, this is what I'm going to do.
Right.
It can be real quick and then everybody sits back and you close the public hearing. But nobody sit at the public hearing, this is what we're going to do other than your general statements.
Right, we did have a representative at the work session
Right.
appear, so I can request the same.
Why don't you ask them to come, so at least, uh, if anybody shows up at the public meeting, at least they know what the right, ambulance people are going to do. Only be a couple of minutes.
Sure. Okay, that sounds good. So, uh, we're going to keep this public hearing open at this point and then, uh, move on to our resolutions.
But you have to, but you have to have a motion.
Oh, motion to make it open?
Okay, okay. And a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then the resolutions.
Resolved that the minutes of the Board of Trustees meetings of October third, two thousand twenty-four and October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four hereby accepted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved that the Justice Court, Police Departments, Building Inspectors and Treasurers, October twenty twenty-four reports are hereby accepted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved that the warrants for October two, two thousand twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents for the general fund, fifty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-eight, thirty-six cents for capital fund are hereby approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved that Jennifer Gordiello is hereby appointed as deputy clerk at a semi-monthly salary of three thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents effective October first, two thousand twenty-four, for a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Twenty. Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, at this point, I would like to thank Jennifer, Jennifer for accepting extra responsibilities and, uh, this promotion. Also, I'd like to thank Denise Ordente for organizing or reorganizing our office staff responsibilities to suit their talents. And, um, we're getting a lot of things that we are handling in-house now rather than, um, contracting for them outside and it's saving the village a great deal of money. So I appreciate both efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job Denise. Whereas AME White Collar Unit Member Police Operations Aid Ada Davilla's position has been reclassified to Senior Police Operations Aid, a non-union position. And whereas the village board desires to codify her terms and conditions of employment as Senior Police Operations Aid in this resolution, now therefore effective July first, two thousand twenty-four. Number one, Ms. Davilla's base salary as police, Senior Police Operations Aid will be five thousand dollars higher than her, uh, pre-existing police operations aid base salary as of July first, two thousand twenty-four. The new semi-month, monthly salary is three thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and thirty-eight cents. Number two, Ms. Davilla's other terms and conditions of employment will be set forth in AME White Collar Unit Articles Three, except paragraph A, four, five, six, seven, except D, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and sixteen, changing police operations aid to senior police operations aid unless or until otherwise changed by the village board, by village board resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, I would like to thank Ada for accepting more responsibility and congratulate her on her, uh, motion. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to sign a service agreement with Dynair Services for eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars for the village hall heating and cooling labor and inspections to be paid out of A one six two zero point four two one municipal buildings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Authorized use of village property Huggs Christmas Tree. Resolved that Huggs Human Understanding and Growth Services, Inc. is hereby authorized to set up community holiday tree at Rogers Beach from November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four through January sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved that East End Hospice is hereby authorized to use the gazebo on the Village Green on Sunday, December eighth, two thousand twenty-four, for an annual tree lighting memorial service from two thirty PM until four PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the payment to Ceiling Long Island LLC in the amount of one thousand, five hundred dollars and zero cents for the resurfacing of the Historical Society parking lot to be paid from GL account A five one one two dot four zero eight, permanent improvements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes accepting with gratitude and appreciation the five thousand dollar donation from Donald Denahan dedicated to the Windmill Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes purchase of daffodils at a cost of six thousand, twenty-nine dollars, twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents to be paid from GL account A eight five ten dot four oh three Village bulb planting program. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, do you remember how many bulbs that is?
One, two, three thousand. Something, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's awesome.
It's, it's.
It's the.
It's an annual, we've been doing it annually since the Main Street project.
Yep.
So, uh?
Yeah, it's real cool.
Yep.
But we should, and we'd like to thank Marcus Tinchi. Marcus Tinchi Landscaping, we're offering to do this yet again at no cost, no work.
He, he provides all of the planting and we pay for the bulbs, it's quite a deal.
Yep.
All right.
Seven thousand bulbs.
Seven thousand.
Nice.
All right.
Wow.
You looked it up, didn't you?
Yeah, I had to look it up personally, I wanted to make sure.
That makes me feel better.
Add this resource.
Thank you.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorized the purchase of three solar electric radar speed signs at a cost of nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to be paid from GL account Apple three one two zero point two Police Department Equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas this board has advertised a local law amending chapter forty of the village code entitled Affordable Housing Units Administration of, by amending certain provisions of said chapter as shown on the attached proposed local law. And whereas a public hearing was held on November seventh, two thousand twenty-four, and whereas all persons present at the hearing have had an opportunity to speak on behalf of or in opposition to the proposed local law or any part thereof, and resolve the, that pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, the proposed amendments to chapter forty are classified as type two action pursuant to six N Y C R R, section six one seven dot five, C twenty-six, routine or continuing agency administration and management, not including new programs or major recording of priorities that may affect the environment, and is exempt from SECR review. Now therefore, after due deliberation, the Board of Trustees of the Village of West Hampton Beach hereby adopts said local law as local law number seven of two thousand twenty-four and advertised and attached, as advertised and attached, and the village clerk is directed to enter said local law in the records of the village and give due notice to the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby refers the matter of the West Hampton Ambulance Services LED sign to the planning board for their consideration.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Support of continued increase state aid for local governments. Whereas until two thousand twenty-four, cities, villages and towns had not received an increase in unrestricted state aid, aim funding in fifteen years, significantly impacting their ability to provide essential services to their residents. And whereas after a prolonged period, without financial support, local governments finally received an increase of fifty million in unrestricted state aid. And whereas local officials express their gratitude for the fifty million increase in unrestricted state aid, recognizing that as a positive step towards addressing longstanding funding challenges. And whereas the state has referred to this new aid as temporary municipal assistance, suggesting that such increase may not continue jeopardizing the sustainability of the crucial municipal programs and services. And whereas the property tax cap further limits the ability of local governments to properly fund the programs and services their residents need. And whereas increased and ongoing state aid for local governments is vital for maintaining infrastructure, public safety, housing and other municipal services. And whereas the challenges of inflation, the increasing cost of labor and supplies, and the end of extraordinary federal aid only accentuate a need for consistent and predictable funding to effectively plan for the future and meet the growing needs of their residents. Now therefore to be resolved that the Village of West Hampton Beach calls upon the governor and state legislator to commit to continuing the initial, additional fifty million unrestricted state aid in two thousand twenty-five and twenty-six state budget and beyond. And be further resolved that the Village of West Hampton Beach urges state officials to recognize the need for a long-term plan that ensures consistent and predictable increases in financial support for local governments to keep pace with inflation. A copy of this resolution shall be sent to the governor Kathy Hochul, Senator Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins, Assembly Speaker Carly Hestie, Senator Palumbo, Assembly Member Thiel, and New York State Conference of Mayors.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that brings us to the public comment portion of our meeting, anyone wish to comment? I have a comment. Um, I don't know what you're complaining about, these guys are terrific, man.
Little immature.
I don't know.
Just about to eat my feet away from them, depending on what they're saying.
Give back, it's been twice tonight.
Nice job. Anyone else have a comment? Question? Okay. We don't have an executive session for a change, so adjourn.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, I guess.
Second. You made the motion.
Sure.
Make a motion.
There.
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.